Y'all doing well?
Doing well.
Yes, sir.
Good. I just want to thank y'all for this opportunity on behalf of Pastor Kelvin and Westmore to come and pray with y'all. And this morning, I was reminded as I was praying with somebody with cancer that we serve a God who has called us not only to have faith that He is, but hope that He can, and then leave it in His hands as we trust that God knows best. So let us pray. God, we just thank you for your wonderful world that you've created. Thank you for your son that you've sent. But God, thank you for the fellowship and the opportunity, Lord, to pursue after you. How you not only ran to us, but you were also willing to wait for us to run to you. But God, I pray tonight that you would give each and every person wisdom, but also the courage to follow your word, purpose to protect each and every one of the students as they begin the new year, but also, Lord, the peace as they journey through this world in the schools with every interaction, whether it's with a preschooler all the way up to a high schooler, God, that they may know that they are valued and cared for, that they are important and the future. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Blake. I call to order and welcome you to the Bradley County Board of Education Regular Meeting for August the 8th, 2024. I'm looking at the people in attendance. I know Denny Collins is here. Where are you, Denny?
We're at the front.
Maybe he's not. Oh, yes, he is. Okay. Bradley County Commission and of course Bradley County Schools. Did I miss anyone from the Commission? No? Anyone else? Linda, is there someone?
Gary Lilly from TOS.
Okay, Dr. Gary.
Lily.
Lily from TOS. Thank you for being here. We also have Abby Carroll, Athens City Schools, and Johnny Kaufman, McMinn County Schools, and you will...
Athens City.
Oh, you're Athens City as well. Okay. Thank you for being here. And the reason that they are here tonight is they are observing and evaluating this board meeting and as we vie for Board of Distinction. So thank you for being here. Our pledge tonight will be led by Josh Taylor.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Our pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business is the consent agenda. Does anyone have items to pull from the consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Miranda, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Rachel Goins. Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Dr. Loveygood.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no. Motion passes.
Thank you. Persons requesting to address the board on agenda items, Ms. Refner?
No one's attending.
Okay, no one. Okay, thank you. Our next item, Director of Schools report, Dr. Linda Cash.
Well, we have all schools open and running and very exciting in visiting schools. I can tell you that we continue to have students enrolled, so we're excited for them to be in our school system and to help and serve them. Enrollment is up. As soon as we have a week's worth of numbers, I will send those to the board, but I can tell you they are up because as I look and count, and I am counting seats, we are more than we had last year. So we're moving in the right direction to serve. But I think the biggest thing tonight is I'd like to congratulate Kirk Campbell, who was the Southeast Principal of the Year. Dana Yost, who is the Southeast Supervisor of the Year. And even further, they are both finalists in the Tennessee Principal and Supervisor of the Year for the State of Tennessee.
Congratulations. And Madam Chair, that's all I have tonight. Okay, thank you. So this fits in quite well because now we'll have Dr. Lilly with the TOS presentation for the Regional Superintendent of the Year, Dr. Linda Cash.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me this evening. My name is Gary Lilly. I am the Executive Director of the Tennessee Organization of School Superintendents, also known as TOS. And we exist to assist superintendents and support public schools. But I'm not really here this evening to talk about TOS. I am here to honor your Director of Schools. I have a special presentation, but before I get to that, I do want to let you know that Dr. Cash is respected throughout the state. She is a leader among her peers. She is an engaged and active advocate certainly for the boys and girls here in Bradley County, but for public schools throughout the state. So when she talks, people listen. And they listen because she's smart, she's innovative, and more than anything, she's got a heart for children. So I'm not going to take too much time, but I do want to tell you one story. And this has happened to me on multiple occasions, and this is absolutely the truth. So part of my role with TOS is to go in and talk to legislators in the legislative session. And so I have gone in multiple times, talked to legislators about a position. And so I will finish, and the legislator says, what does Dr. Cash think about that? And so I'm always happy when I can say, well, Dr. Cash is on board with that as well. So that lends credibility. So you can tell that I am very appreciative of Dr. Cash and all that she does certainly for you all, but also for TOS. She serves on the Legislative Committee, and we work very closely during the legislative session. But the award I'm about to present is not a TOS award. Dr. Cash was selected by her peers to be the Southwest...
Southeast.
Southeast. I apologize. I am from Southwest. That's ingrained. Southeast Superintendent of the Year. So that's quite an accomplishment. Thank you. Thank you very much. We wish you luck with the rest of the process and look forward to talking to you shortly. And I'll leave this box over here.
Thank you, Dr. Lilly.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, of course, congratulations to our supervisor and our principal for their honors, Kirk and of course Dana, and to Dr. Linda Cash. Congratulations. It's always been a pleasure working with Dr. Cash, and I hope to continue for several years having that type of a relationship. It is very positive, as you say, Dr. Lilly, for the students of Bradley County. Because if we get that piece right, everything else will fall in place. So congratulations.
Thank you. If I start talking, I'll cry. So I'm just going to say, let's move on.
Okay, our next item is ACT update. Denny Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. You have an informational handout in front of you. I hope that didn't get gone. So you have some information in front of you that you can peruse through as I give this. That's the same information on the screen. So you don't have to feel obligated to check out the screen. I want to give you some informational updates regarding changes to the ACT. And on the first page, you'll notice I've given you some information pertaining to scores and trends of scores since 2018. In Tennessee, our students participate in the ACT by law as juniors and then again as seniors. So every graduating class has the opportunity to engage in that test twice during their class term. So we'll have a group of juniors coming up this spring, and then again, they'll do a retest as seniors in the fall. There are some changes that are taking place to the ACT that we want to make you guys aware of. You can see the trend and what has happened. The national average for ACT has declined for six consecutive years. So that's probably one of the reasons that ACT is looking to revamp some of their practices. You can see our stats in terms of the State of Tennessee and Bradley County. Currently, there are 18 states that mandate the ACT be a part of the graduation requirements, 18 of the 50. We are one of four that require either the ACT or the SAT. So we're in a situation where everybody that's graduating must take the ACT. There's not a score minimum, but they have to participate in that. And you can see the composite averages for Bradley County Schools and the Class of 2023, and the composite average for the State of Tennessee from 2023. On the next slide, I've shown you kind of some relevance to students and families. Why is ACT important? I've given you a cutout from a specific university. I believe it's the University of South Alabama. Each school or many schools will show you some merit-based scholarships that are available based upon their performance on ACT. This is an example of that. And you can see a student that performs with a 32 or higher, has a specific GPA in their high school career, can expect full tuition to this specific university. So different colleges and universities engage in the ACT and GPA requirements in different capacities. One of the things I do want to note, that while several universities are moving more towards the scholarship and merit-based, there are a number of universities that are becoming test optional. They're saying you do not have to provide your ACT score in order to gain admittance, but they will continue to have the ACT as an opportunity for scholarships. So it's a mixed bag in terms of what the ACT can do and what it cannot do. One thing to note, that Tennessee Department of Education currently does not recognize a super score. So when they calibrate our score, they give us an average. That is not a student's super score. So if I take it 10 times, the State of Tennessee only takes my highest score on one particular test. Many universities take what's called a super score, which means you guys are familiar with that. The highest from each category gets composited again. So a little bit of gamesmanship from the State of Tennessee, but that's something that you need to be aware of when you calculate our scores. The last slide is the phased-in changes that are happening. And many of you may have heard this in the news. It's been widely reported over the past month. On the left-hand side, you can see what is current in terms of the national exam and the school-based exam. There are four benchmark tests, English, math, reading, and science. You can see how long those tests are. You can see the number of questions that make up each test. You can see that it's a three-hour exam. There's a lot of logistical issues for a school to engage in that. You also have a national ACT exam. So when you're... Some of you, Mr. Taylor, your child may be taking the ACT. Ms. Lee, your child may be taking it. I have two that are taking it coming up. They may participate in a national exam, which when we go to Lee University or Bradley Central High School on a Saturday, that's a national exam. The State of Tennessee provides the two opportunities during the school day. So that's the difference between the state exam and the national exam, even though the scores are calculated the same. What's happening in the spring of 2025 for the national test first, we're going to make science optional. So we're dropping one of the four. We're going to shorten the test. We're going to reduce it to two hours and eliminate 44 of the combined English and reading questions and have shorter reading passages. So the goal from ACT is to increase engagement and hopefully stop the trend of declining scores. That's happening on a national level in the spring of 2025. By 2026, that'll trickle down to the state ACT exams. That's the update of what's happening. It's not happening next week. It's not happening with our fall administration, but it will happen nationally in the spring. So if you have young people that are signing up for a national test in 2025, that's something that they can anticipate. No more science exam. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
D, what is the reasoning behind the state not taking a super score when the University of Tennessee and all the universities, the Tennessee University as a whole, UTC, Tennessee, UT Martin, all those universities in the state take the super score?
Yes, sir. My guess would be it's a logistical question. It's very difficult when a student takes multiple national tests. It's difficult for the state to compile all of those, whereas it's easy to compile the school test. So when we take it in October and then again in April, those scores automatically go to the State Department of Education, whereas the national test, those don't necessarily always translate. So it becomes very difficult and sometimes incumbent upon the family to report those schools to the scores to the school.
Right.
That becomes a difficult process. So I think the state would say, and I would have to defer to State Department officials, but they would indicate that it's probably a little more efficient to do that, even though the scores aren't as accurate.
The second question I have with that is, how many did you say universities or how many states did you say? I think it's less, a few amount of universities are taking the ACT score and the SAT score, as a matter of fact.
Correct.
As an entrance into a university, especially out West.
Correct. Yes, sir. And that's becoming more prevalent in the Southeast as well. And the language that you'll see is test optional. So you can see that they will take the test. They'll accept your scores, but it is not a prerequisite to admissions to the school. So you have multiple options to get into a school. University of Tennessee has gone to that this coming year. That's correct.
Madam Chair.
Oh, I was just going to say, well, first of all, thank you for presenting this. I'd asked this to be added to the agenda because it was questions that not only I had, but I know others' parents had reached out as well. So thank you for taking the time to do this. But can you tell us, so this will take place spring of 2025 on the national test?
Yes, sir.
So this will be, current juniors will be affected by these changes?
That's, well, anyone that takes the national test. So you may have, you know, a middle school student that decides, I want to sign up for a test that's given at Lee University on a Saturday. If they select to take an online test in 2025, which is now an option, they will have this new platform. That's correct.
And then who makes the decision on whether or not science is included or not? Would the participant decide that?
So that's correct. So the participant would be able to say, as they do now, there's a writing component that's optional. So most students elect not to take that. We don't give that as a state requirement. So you can sign up for ACT with writing. That will become part of the game plan here. So the core test will be your reading, English, and math with science optional. I would imagine, just guessing, most students will not opt to take that if that becomes the national trend.
Okay.
Dr. Cash?
One of the things that I think is important for us to be clear, though, is scholarships are still based on those scores, but the scholarships are based on the super scores, if I am remembering correctly.
That's correct. Most, I shouldn't say most, a great many universities collect super scores. So that's an option for our students. And as you see, if you go back to the previous slide, you can see the, this is kind of how they present it. You have a GPA requirement. You have an SAT requirement. And there's a threshold for that. And if you meet X threshold, you'll get X amount of dollars. So that's how it's presented. You don't have to do that. That's an option for a merit-based scholarship. So if you are test optional, you won't have access to that. But if you, you know, if you move through that ACT test and provide that information, you would have access to that scholarship. That's correct.
And I think one of the things we've always encouraged our students, as well as for our families, is to really prepare for the ACT, not necessarily looking at an entrance to college, but looking at as a scholarship opportunity. So
Absolutely.
We want to be sure that still stays out there, that attached to scores are opportunities for college funds.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, with the super score or in looking at scholarships, will they be penalized if they do not take the science piece?
Again, the national test is moving to science optional. So that will be the platform by which the 1 through 36 is calculated.
Okay, that's the national.
That's correct. So there will no longer be a science part of the 1 through 36. I would imagine that scores will continue to increase, and I think that's the goal of this, is to try to find a way, let's shorten the test, take out science. Let's see if we can stop this trend of declining scores and move the scores up. Now, there's going to be some unintended consequences of that. I would say, as scores rise, it's going to become more competitive within universities. They may alter their requirements for scholarships. So we're in a little bit of a trial and error type period with this new requirement, but it's something that both the schools and the states will have to figure out, as well as the universities.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Along this timeline again, so the state will adopt this change in '26?
That's correct. It is anticipated the spring of '26. So that would be your current sophomores, I believe. That's correct. Current sophomores would do that. Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
I have a comment. I do find it interesting. I think Dr. Cash is right. I know she's right. Yeah, I think it's interesting, and I think she's right. I think it's interesting that we're having fewer and fewer universities across the country that are taking ACT as an entrance, but they take it as somewhat of a scholarship. Not all. In fact, it's getting a lesser trend of taking it even for a scholarship method. Secondly, is this. It's interesting to me that the state would not keep a super score. I understand with technology that where they could do that. We're not in pencil and paper time. We've got computers, I think, in Nashville. So I think they have the capability of compiling the super score in the state to figure out how, this is what we rate. This is what our universities are doing. And so I do think, Dr. Cash, I know she's right. We still do well on those tests, so we get scholarships.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Thank you, Ms. Collins. Our next item, Michigan Avenue Playground Dedication, Dr. Ruthie Pannie.
Madam Chairman Beatty, Dr. Cash, and other distinguished members of the board, thank you for letting me come tonight and make this proposal. I stand here not alone, but on behalf of several faculty members, even students, and our PTO president. In recognition of the outstanding contributions and unwavering support... I asked my husband to pray that I wouldn't cry, but I'm probably going to cry. In recognition of the outstanding contributions and unwavering support provided by Mr. Jackie Evans to our school and our community, I propose that we honor his legacy by naming the new Michigan Avenue Playground in his honor. This dedication would serve as a lasting tribute to his generosity and commitment to the well-being of our students and the students in Bradley County. Mr. Evans has been a longstanding supporter of Bradley County Schools and specifically Michigan Avenue. As a parent, grandparent, and business partner, Mr. Evans and his family have made significant contributions to our school over the years. I've heard stories of him providing donuts every week to students, providing bounce houses for field days, and filling the library with new books. More recently, Mr. Evans is characterized by his genuine excitement and love toward our students when he comes to visit and when he hosts our student chorus on their community tour. Mr. Evans, along with his wife and Jackie Evans Trucking, made a significant donation toward the completion of our new playground. In fact, Mr. Evans' gift was the first donation we received. In true Jackie Evans style, Mrs. Kyle, our community partner liaison, and I received a phone call from Rhonda, his daughter, asking us to drop by when we had a few minutes. When we arrived, Mr. Evans quietly gave us a check, and he told us that he hoped the money would help us reach our goal. There was no pomp, no circumstance, just a quiet meeting in his office with him and his daughters. Mr. Jackie Evans is a humble and generous man who has made a significant impact in the community. Each year, he donates money to every school in Bradley County to provide coats and other essentials for needy children. His kindness and dedication ensures that many students have the necessary resources to stay warm and supported, reflecting his deep commitment to the well-being of the children in our community. These contributions have had a profound impact on our students, enhancing their educational experience with fostering a safe and enjoyable environment for play and learning. Dedicating and naming the Michigan Avenue Playground in honor of Mr. Jackie Evans would be a fitting tribute to his unwavering generosity and commitment to the well-being of our students and the students in Bradley County. It would serve as a lasting reminder to our community of the positive impact he has made in the lives of our children. The recognition would not only honor Mr. Evans for his contributions, but also inspire others to follow his example of selflessness and dedication to supporting those in need. There is significant support within the Michigan Avenue School Community for this dedication, including our staff, former administrators, and our PTO board. As a school community, we can think of no one who deserves this honor more than Mr. Evans. Upon approval, the dedication ceremony is planned for September 19th, 2024. This dedication ceremony would bring together Mr. Evans' family, the Michigan Avenue Business Partners, Bradley County School Board members, local officials, and our Michigan Avenue students and staff. It will be a meaningful event that celebrates the entire community's appreciation of Mr. Evans' contributions. Naming the playground after Mr. Jackie Evans is a fitting way to honor his contributions and ensure his legacy lives on within our school community. I respectfully request your approval of this proposal.
Do I have a motion to approve the naming of Michigan Avenue Playground?
I'd like to make a motion for the naming of the Michigan Avenue School Playground in honor of Mr. Jackie Evans.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Bryson. Any discussion? I just want to say from a personal as well as a professional standpoint, now I'm going to do the same thing.
I've got a box of clay.
I know. Jackie Evans, I will not tell you for how many years, and it probably started before I came to Bradley County Schools, but he has consistently worked with Michigan Avenue and other schools within the district. And the wonderful family that he has raised is just a tribute to he and his wife. So thank you, Mr. Evans. And I would like to ask for his family, Jackie and his family, to stand.
Thank you so much. On behalf of our family, we're so proud of you, and we're very thankful for this recognition.
I can't remember when I was lost for words, but...
I don't think I can remember that either.
That is rare.
It's really nice to be here. And I want to thank you for all that you do for Bradley County and for us. We got to continue to support our schools because without our schools, we don't have anything. And I'm tremendously proud of Michigan Avenue because they've come to the front and they've made us all proud. And anything I can do to help, we want to contribute what we can to help all the schools. And I want to say again, I thank you very much.
Thank you. I will have to have a disclaimer there. My daughter enjoyed a lot of fun times at that farm, so I personally thank you as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Our next... Oh, we need to vote. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Miranda, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Dr. Deb Loveygood.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no. Motion passes.
Thank you. Our next item, Panorama Education. Don Cox?
Good evening. I'm Don Cox, the Director of School-Based Mental Health Grant that we have received. I'm here today to ask for approval to sign a three-year contract with Panorama Education. If approved, we could purchase this platform using grant funds. This platform will help the district use data to make sure the services we are providing benefit our students. The purpose of Panorama Education is to connect the dots between academics, behavior, attendance, and life skills. The grant is purchasing this platform for our school counselors, social workers, and school psychologists to use. We are not requesting any additional district funds, but for your approval to sign a three-year contract versus a one-year with Panorama Education. We are not requesting any additional district funds, but for your approval to sign a three-year contract versus a one-year with Panorama Education. This will save $30,000 and provide data that we can collect through the length of the grant. Thank you for your time and consideration. You all have the proposal before you. Can I address any questions at this time before you vote?
Go ahead, Mr. Taylor.
Is this replacing anything that we're currently using now?
It is not.
It's a brand-new platform. I've done some reading on it. It's very impressive, so thank you.
Anything else? Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of the Panorama Education platform?
I make a motion we approve the purchase.
Okay, Mr. Bryson, and a second by Mr. Taylor. Any further discussion? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Nancy Casey.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no, motion passes.
Our next item, Security Purchase, Zach Pike.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board, Dr. Cash. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm seeking approval for a multi-year contract as well. It's a three-year contract for a safety and security solution that will enhance our communication and notification process at every campus in collaboration with the 911 Center and first responders. And the best news is, I already have the money set aside in my budget to make the purchase.
That's always a great, that's always a great thing to say, Zach. Okay, and each board member did have the opportunity to individually speak with Mr. Pike. So do I have a motion to approve the security purchase for Bradley County Schools?
I make a motion we approve the security.
Okay, I have Mr. Bryson. Dr. Lovinggood, you want a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I think we've had that discussion individually. So Miranda, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Nancy Casey.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would like, if it's possible, to just may know that I appreciate Mr. Zach Pike and his proactive approach to protecting our most precious asset, all of our children. So thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Now, the next few items, Susan Willcutt with Budget Amendments. And the first one will be Fund 141-2025-2.
Yes, ma'am. So tonight, this First Amendment is actually just bringing part of the Spark Grant that was in reserve back into the budget, so that it can be spent. So that's all that one is.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Budget Amendment for CTE Grant?
I have a motion that we approve the budget for CTE.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes, Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Nancy Casey.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no, motion passes.
Our next item is Fund 141-2025, Budget Amendment 3.
Yes, ma'am. And this is one that, if you remember, when we passed the budget, we had built in there a 2% raise. And of course, we were hoping that we could do more, but at the time, we didn't know how all the funding was gonna kind of shake out, but you gave us the directive that if that was possible, you would like for us to try to add a percent to that. So that budget amendment in front of you, you can tell at the top, this is actually the revenue that we are projecting that we will receive that will make up the difference. And I just want to highlight that a little bit. The majority of that, our last TESA estimate, or our final estimate, came in almost $450,000 more than we had, than we had when we did the budget. So basically, we had gotten the April estimate when you guys approved the budget. But if you remember, we did say we believe, or we're hopeful, that we are going to get more with that last estimate. And in fact, we did. So that makes up the majority of what we needed for that additional percent. But if you look also, we are, we feel a little bit more comfortable about increasing what we think we're gonna get in sales tax. The last couple of months, we have seen the trend change just a little bit for the positive. So we are adding $212,000 from there. And then you can see the other ones, we've just kind of, we saved a little bit of money on our medical insurance. If you remember, we were advised to budget 7% increase on insurance. That ended up being more like 5.9%. So that savings from that is also contributing to what we are trying to do. So all put together, we were able to come up with $746,602 to add one more percent to all salaries in the district. That will be put in place in September if this board approves, and of course, if it makes it through the commission approval as well.
With great pleasure, do I have a motion to fund the Budget Amendment for the additional salary increase?
No, I make a motion we approve. So I wish we could do more, but that is great.
A second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? I would just like to thank Ms. Willcutt for looking at this and diligently trying to pull that together for Bradley County Schools employees. So thank you.
Well, and my staff, of course, was also involved in that a great deal. And the thing is, you guys always, that's always your priority. And so we try everywhere in the world to do what y'all ask us to do, and I just think it's really great that that is your priority. And I'm really happy that we could find it, you know? And we feel really comfortable about that number. We do not feel like that will put us in any kind of danger or in any kind of fiscal harm. I feel like that we can, we can do this and feel good about it.
Thank you. Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes. Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Nancy Casey.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no, motion passes.
Our next Budget Amendment, 141-2025, Number 4.
Okay, this one is a humdinger. And again, this is kind of at the directive of this board, obviously. And if you remember also, when we presented the budget, we tried to estimate what we thought might roll at the end of the year. But of course, in April, that's really early to know what we're gonna have June 30. But you guys have already set the priorities for the capital projects that you want to do. And so when we rolled, when we did our June 30 roll, we ended up having about a $13.3 million fund balance when all was said and done. And so you know that basically, we like to keep somewhere around $7 or $8 million in there for unexpected emergencies, or if funding were to slow down, or we didn't get something for one year. They want you to at least hold enough to pay one month's payroll. They really advise two. But that's, we try to balance out what we think is safe, but not excessive. And so by doing that, we took what you guys directed as far as your priorities. And so that's what this Budget Amendment is for. So we are actually taking, or we're proposing to take, $5,292,033.26, and that will be transferred into two areas, which you can see at the bottom. $1,825,000 of that will go into 141 Capital Outlay. And then the rest of it, you can see it's listed on here as an operating transfer. You will see this number in just a minute when it goes into our Capital Project 177 Fund. So you will see that number twice. But just keep in mind, $5.29 million is, we're proposing that that be moved into capital projects for the projects that you have already approved.
Do I have a motion to approve this Budget Amendment for Capital Outlay?
I make a motion we approve the Budget Amendment.
Mr. Bryson makes the motion. Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Casey. Any discussion, further discussion? Mr. Taylor?
I just wanted to clarify, so the 1.8, and I'm just rounding these numbers, the 1.8 is gonna transfer to the 141 General Fund. And then the 3.4 will go to 177, which is basically our building fund.
That's correct. And if you look at the explanation below, it kind of highlights what those main things are.
Okay.
I'd be glad to, you know.
Thank you.
Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes. Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Nancy Casey.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no, motion passes.
Our next Budget Amendment, Fund 145.
And this one is just basically, we're moving the FY '24 remaining funds into the FY '25 programs. So it's almost like the reserve is being loaded back in there for 145, which is the PI Center. Just as a reminder, that's our PI Center books.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Amendment for the PI Innovation Center?
I make a motion to approve Fund 145.
Okay, and, okay, a motion by Ms. Lee, a second by Ms. Casey. Any discussion? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes. Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Nancy Casey. Ms. Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no, motion passes.
The next Amendment, Fund 177.
Yes, ma'am. And this is the one that balances out with the Number 4 that we've already talked about. So you can see that that $3,467,033 just rolls over. It was on the bottom when it was coming out of 141. Now it's coming in the top of 177. And the only other thing there is that $144,000 also sitting there is where we had estimated at year-end what everything would look like. And there were some changes that we didn't know about, so this is to true that up. So that $144,000 is also additional, but that is just to true up what year-end looked like. Now we have the actual number, so we can make it trued up.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Budget Amendment, again, for Capital Projects 177?
I make a motion we approve the Budget Amendment for Project 177.
I second.
A second by Mr. Taylor, the motion by Ms. Casey. Discussion? Miranda, would you call the roll?
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Nancy Casey.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Willcutt.
Thank you very much.
Our next item, Special Education Bus Purchase, Terry McElhaney.
Well, it's that time of year again. We gotta buy another special ed bus.
Yes.
So tonight, I come just to seek approval. There's a huge supply chain problem when it comes to special ed buses. It has a lot to do with the chassis. And we ordered some buses last year around August, and we will not get those until January. So you can see, when the buses go out, we're not able to replenish them and get them back and put new ones on the road. So we have an opportunity to purchase a special ed bus that is budgeted this year and have it in here to us by January, instead of having to go ahead and wait a whole year and a half to get that bus in here. It is through our same vendor that has bid, entered the bid packets for the last three years that I've been here. We don't have other companies coming in. A lot of the other transportation companies are not just building special ed buses anymore. So I'm coming to you tonight just to ask permission to go ahead and purchase a special ed bus from Mid-South and get that process started, so that we're not having to wait for another year and a half to get an extra bus in.
Do I have a motion to approve the Special Education Bus Purchase?
I make a motion we approve your Special Education Bus.
Okay, Mr. Bryson makes the motion. A second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Casey. Discussion? Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, so these buses are the ones that we own as a county, where the other ones are contracted out. Yes, sir. Contracted. I understood. I just wanted to make sure everybody else kind of has an understanding. And we can only run those buses for 15 years. And you have to think, those buses run every day, and they take a lot of beating on the road. And so, you know, when we get the opportunity to replenish them every year, we want to try to keep our inventory new so that we can take care of our kids and provide our kids the best service that they deserve.
Any other questions, comments? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood. Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Nancy Casey.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you so much, board.
Thank you, Mr. McElhaney. Before we start, Corbett, I was just going to recognize Cindy Slater. I think you came in, and I did not see you. Did anyone else come in? Cindy is, of course, is with the Bradley County Commission. Welcome. Thank you. Okay, we're with Corbett Drew. I think we have you for several items as well. Waterville Project Change Order.
If you recall, when we bid out the portable, the improvements associated with the portable at Waterville, we included an ad alternate for awnings. And the numbers at the time of the original bid were around $75,000 to add awnings. Been working with a contractor. They came back and proposed an alternate to their ad alternate that cut budget, but did not cut corners. And it matches the existing awnings. And it's now $31,000 add, and it would take them about six weeks to complete. So now that the portable's in, we see the need for it, and wanted to give the board an opportunity to move forward with the awnings at a lower price than they were originally anticipating.
That's always great to hear. Do I have a motion to approve the Waterville Community Project Change Order to add alternate awning?
I make a motion to approve the Waterville Project Change Order.
Ms. Lee makes the motion. A second?
Second.
Second by multiple people. Mr. Taylor, we'll give you that one. Okay, any further discussion? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes. Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Nancy Casey.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no, motion passes.
Our next item, Bradley Central Baseball Fieldhouse Architectural Contract, Mr. Drew.
You recall the proposed fieldhouse replacement, single-story, pre-engineered. We replaced the existing with a single-story, pre-engineered metal building with a split base block facade, locker rooms, restaurants, showers, laundry, and coaches lounge. Basically putting back exactly what's there, but in much better condition. And in a permanent condition. The, we've solicited and received an architectural proposal from Cope Architects and have submitted that to you for your approval.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Bradley Central Baseball Field House Architectural Contract?
I make a motion.
Dr. Lovinggood makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, we'll give this one to Ms. Casey. Okay, any discussion?
I just have a couple of things. I know that one of the things that we had discussed when we were talking about this was the tying in of the bathrooms that are out there on the, for the visitors. I know that that was one of the things that they had discussed, is this, will it address this particular?
So this is, no ma'am, this is, there are no public restrooms associated with this. This would be some minor, or some repairs in the press box, and basically a replacement of the fieldhouse itself. And if we're able to extend the budget, we can make some modest upgrades to the public restrooms that are adjacent to the fieldhouse. But this would not anticipate major overhaul or replacement of the bathroom facilities.
My only request would be that before Peter begins the designs, if he will just meet with Travis, the head coach, and Patrick Spangler, just to kind of go over all this with them to make sure, because I know that they've got some ideas in their own mind, just to make sure that they understand what's going forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a time period when this is gonna be done?
We're anticipating, and Peter can speak to the design, but we're anticipating about two and a half to three months of design. And then we'll probably take about a month to permit and bid it. And at that point, we're really beholden to lead time on pre-engineered metal buildings. And once we have that, the lead time on pre-engineered metal buildings is not as long as it was a year ago, but it's still, it could take three months.
Will they be able to use the old building while we're waiting on the new building?
Certainly. We're not gonna take the, we're not gonna take the existing out of commission until we're ready to replace it. And once we have an understanding of the construction timeframe, the duration, mainly the lead time on the pre-engineered metal building, once we have that in hand... That, we're not going to take the new, we're not going to take the existing out of commission until we're ready to replace it. And once we have an understanding of the construction timeframe, the duration, mainly the lead time on the pre-engineered metal building, once we have that in hand, we'll sit back down with Patrick and with Travis, and we'll make some decisions and let the, and make a recommendation to the board if we wait until after baseball season, or if we try to press forward ahead of baseball season. I think it would be a very, very tight timeframe to press forward ahead, just color commentary, but we're going to, we're going to do it with pleasure, we're going to respond to the pleasure of the board.
Anything else? Miranda, will you please call the roll?
Nancy Casey.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovingdon.
Yes.
Vicki Beatty.
Yes.
Six yes, zero, no motion passes.
Our next item, Mr. Drew, Hopewell Elementary School Architectural Contract.
So everybody's seen the three-phased plans to expand and renovate Hopewell Elementary. We're excited about the project. And again, we've solicited a proposal from Cope Architects. They've been a participant in the planning and, and to this end. And we've, we've solicited a proposal from, from Cope Architects. It includes all the engineering fees, as well as the architectural fees, and that contract is before you for approval tonight.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Hopewell Elementary School Architectural Contract? It's with great pleasure, Madam Chairman. Make that motion.
Come on.
A motion by Ms. Casey, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Taylor. Miranda, will you call the roll?
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovingdon.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Nancy Casey.
Yes.
Vicki Beatty.
Yes.
Six yes, zero, no motion passes.
And Mr. Drew, Walker Valley High School bleachers.
Before we move off of the Hopewell project, all, all gratitude to the county commissioners that are in the audience for funding it.
Yes.
The Walker Valley High School bleachers, we, we redirected again after the last, we attempted to go through tips, we were not happy with the results, and we competitively bid it. We had two bids come in, both included general contractors, bleacher manufacturers, and, and bleacher installers. Both teams were complete, both teams have, would have, would have licensed professional engineers in the state of Tennessee sign off on them. Interestingly, neither of the two groups bid the angle frame type bleachers. Everybody bid the I-beam type with pure foundations to match the existing. We got bids from Toadvine and Presswood. Toadvine actually proposed, their number was $439,361. That included 756 additional seats, and would have taken 275 days to complete. Presswood partnered with Southern Bleachers, who, Southern Bleachers was the manufacturer and installer of the original bleachers that are already there. Presswood's number came in at $388,144.85. Their package includes 860 additional seats, and, and proposes 266 days to complete. So it's our recommendation to move forward with Presswood for the expansion of the bleachers at Walker Valley.
Do I have a motion to accept the bid from Presswood Construction, Inc., for the Walker Valley High School bleachers?
I'm glad to make the motion to get the bleachers, to get the bleachers I wanted at Walker Valley. Hey Teddy, can I say?
We have a motion to approve those bleachers, a second by?
A second.
Dr. Lovingdon, any further discussion? Are you sure, Mr. Bryson?
I'm glad they're getting bleachers. I hope Bradley Walker Valley get anything they want.
Okay. Now you may regret saying that.
I'm not regret it, but I did. I'm saying, most of us, we represent most of us, and we talk to the best for most of us.
Yes, we do, we do. Miranda, will you please call the roll?
Vicki Beatty.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovingdon.
Yes.
Nancy Casey.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Nancy Casey.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Six yes, zero, no motion passes.
Ms. Lee?
The next policy is Policy 1.400, which is student transportation. This policy that you have before you basically just revises to add the new state requirements. And on this student transportation policy, I'm going to ask for this to be approved on a first and second reading, because we are actually already, have already implemented these things with our bus drivers and issued these certificates. So we have already completed this, and are currently doing this. So I would like to make a motion to approve Policy 3.400 for first and second reading.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Casey. Any discussion or questions? Miranda, oh, Dr. Lovingdon?
No, I just, I say, good job.
Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes. Dr. Jeff Lovingdon.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Vicki Beatty.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Nancy Casey.
Yes.
Six yes, zero, no motion passes.
Ms. Lee?
The next policy is Policy 1.501, which is visitors to the schools. And this basically just revises the policy to add the highlighted areas for basically the code of conduct for visitors when they are in the school. And they're also working to create a visitor code of conduct to go along with this. So I would make a motion to approve Policy 1.501 for first reading.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Lovingdon. Any questions or discussion? Miranda, would you call the roll?
Yes. Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovingdon.
Yes.
Vicki Beatty.
Yes.
Nancy Casey.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Six yes, zero, no motion passes.
Ms. Lee?
Next policy is 4.214, the use of artificial intelligence programs. This is actually a new policy that we have implemented due to the fact that we now have artificial intelligence. And just basically, this policy basically tells the use of how we can use, the use of artificial intelligence in our schools, and they are also working with the supervisor of technology to work on protocols and procedures for this use. So I would like to make a motion to approve Policy 4.214 on first reading.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bryson. Any discussion, questions? Miranda, would you call the roll?
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Nancy Casey.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Vicki Beatty.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovingdon.
Yes.
Six yes, zero, no motion passes.
Next policy is 4.600, grading system. This policy is basically the same policy we have. The only thing we're adding are the words dual enrollment courses. That is just to comply with the new state laws that we have. So I make a motion to approve 4.600 on first reading.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Taylor. Discussion, questions? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes. Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Nancy Casey.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Vicki Beatty.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovingdon.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Six yes, zero, no motion passes.
The next policy is 6.300, code of conduct. This policy is the same policy that we have, it is just adding the terminology that law enforcement and the directors of schools are immediately contacted when applicable. And so I will make a motion to approve Policy 6.300 on first reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Taylor. Discussion? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Nancy Casey.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovingdon.
Yes.
Vicki Beatty.
Yes.
Six yes, zero, no motion passes.
The next policy we have is 6.309. This policy basically just adds the highlighted sections that regard, that are regarding the zero-tolerant offenses that has to do with zero tolerance of business and mass violence. And I will make a motion to approve Policy 6.309 on first reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Casey. Discussion, questions? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovingdon.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Nancy Casey.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Six yes, zero, no motion passes.
Ms. Lee?
Next policy is 4.214, the use of artificial intelligence programs. This is actually a new policy that we have implemented due to the fact that we now have artificial intelligence. And just basically, this policy basically tells the use of how we can use, the use of artificial intelligence in our schools, and they are also working with the supervisor of technology to work on protocols and procedures for this use. So I would like to make a motion to approve Policy 4.214 on first reading.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bryson. Any discussion, questions? Miranda, would you call the roll?
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Nancy Casey.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Vicki Beatty.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovingdon.
Yes.
Nancy Casey.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Six yes, zero, no motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
You're welcome.
The next item, announcements. September the 2nd, schools will be closed, Labor Day. September the 3rd, schools will be closed, stockpile staff development. September the 5th, the Board of Education will be participating in the TSBA Southeast Fall District Meeting. Our next regular meeting?
Can we know where that Southeast meeting is?
It's Athens.
Yeah, it's in Athens City.
Well, we will see you soon.
It's Athens City.
Athens City? Okay.
Athens School, the elementary school.
Oh, well, great. Thank you, Ms. Casey. And then our next meeting will be September the 12th, and this is a regular board meeting. Anything else to add? Miranda, Dr. Cash?
Are we having agenda items for next meeting?
Yeah, that's my next one. Do you have anything to add?
No, ma'am, I just want to add something to the agenda for next meeting.
Yes.
The naming of the playground at Michigan Avenue on September the 19th.
Yes. Oh, yes, thank you.
Did she say a time?
She didn't say a time.
We'll send it out. September the 19th, and that's?
9:30 a.m.
9:30 a.m., and that's at Michigan Avenue Elementary. Now, Dr. Lovingdon, agenda items for the next meeting.
I'm sorry to jump.
That's okay.
I just saw you were in a rhythm there, and I, you know, I love watching the Olympics. Isn't it been fun watching the Olympics?
Yes, it has.
You know, I'm what, the opening ceremony scared me a little bit, but the Olympics as a whole, and I love watching the track. And it, it was neat to see, I was watching the track just last night, watching the United States guy catch up and pass the guy for the gold, it was exciting. And I was so proud that we passed that, that we're going to cover the Walker Valley track. And what I'd like to put on the agenda, I'd just like an update on where we are on the Bradley High School track on the next agenda. I know we have a little thing, I just want to make sure that, kind of give me an update on where we are in the process of the Bradley County High School track.
Okay.
I just a reminder, the next meeting will be voting, everybody needs to be aware, we're voting on officers at, at the port. And on, on the track, I ran track at Bradley High School, I was captain of the track team, I was the track coordinator, but would we not need the commission to?
Just an update, Dr. Cash?
I just want to update where we are.
I agree, no, I agree, I'm fine, I agree.
Madam Chair, I'll, I'll be glad to work with Chairman Slater, who is the chair of the Education Committee, and we will get together a, a report from the County Commission.
Okay. Thank you.
That's good.
We will add update on VCHS track. Any other items? If not, this meeting's adjourned.